If you can give a student that might be watching this podcast, one superpower to help them to transition to college, but more importantly, through college and life, what would that superpower be and why?
Um, and the superpower just now we throwing the life aspect of it is,
Yeah.
is understanding how important relationship building is.
And so key.
To be able to try to do that with anybody you run and you interact with.
Mm hmm.
We are all taught consciously or sometimes unconsciously, even from the pool that you're in solos, right?
Mm hmm. So true.
You know, again, you have friends, likes attract likes, right?
Mm hmm.
You learn at a very early age, you're in elementary school, you and I like the same thing, we gonna be friends, right?
Right, right.
Like my day, you like the same cartoon or whatever, if that's what, we gonna be friends, right?
So true. Hello, I want to welcome you to season four of How to Play the Game of College, y'all. This season, I'm super, super excited to have some really great guests. And today, there is no exception, y'all. This guy is one that I look up to and just really doing some great things here in Memphis and just around the world. He's a father, he's a husband, works at FedEx, delicious goes on and on and on. And I think one of the biggest parts, he's running for county mayor, right?
Yeah, no doubt.
I'm gonna stop right there, man. I know I won't do your introduction any justice. So I'm gonna have you just to give us a high level overview of those who might be living on the rock, man. Who is Mikel Lowry? Welcome to the podcast, my guy.
Thank you, thank you, brother. Thanks for having me. Congratulations on all the success you're having with the podcast. I'm glad, I'm glad now you invited me to be on.
Man.
Stuff, man. So it's great, it's great.
Yes, yes, yes.
So congratulations on all your success. But, man, you just laid it out, man. Those are things that's important, right? I'm a father, a husband, I got three daughters and I love dearly. But, you know, born in Memphis and I lived in many places, but obviously this is home for me as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, uh, uh, always like to make sure people know that I'm a proud alum of Lamorenoon College.
Yeah, we'll talk about that a little bit later, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we get into speak, speak on how to play a game of college, you know?
Yes, yes, yes.
Those out there when it comes to that as well. But, but no, man, it's been, you know, I've been have, lived my career. My career's been great and, uh, obviously, um, been on the county commission uh, for the past seven years as well. And, and we've done some exciting things there as far as approving, you know, allocation for two new schools.
Yeah.
Which obviously maybe even kind of catalyst to our conversation because we haven't built a new school in Shelby County in almost 12 years.
Yes, yes.
And so our communities need those and, and obviously that shapes culture and everything else. So I'm proud of the work we've done there. And obviously, as you mentioned, I'm looking to, to, to step into hopefully another role.
Yeah.
That leadership is needed to make sure that our whole county is working together.
Right.
And not in solos. So anyway, man, that's, uh, but then at the end of the day, love home, love my community and want to sex sport. And one of those folks that obviously, just like you, uh, we gotta figure out how we're making a difference in people's lives. And that doesn't necessarily mean being elected office, like how
So true.
difference with what you're doing and how you're encouraging young people and
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
how we're taking the next step where that's college and careers and everything else. So, yeah, how we playing our parts, brother?
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, man, thank you and welcome to the podcast. Let's get into it. This season, I'm starting off the question, man. If you can give a student that might be watching this podcast, one superpower to help them to transition to college, but more importantly, through college and life, what would that superpower be and why?
Um, and the superpower just now we throwing the life aspect of it is,
Yeah.
is understanding how important relationship building is.
And so key.
To, to be able to try to do that with anybody you run and you interact with.
Mm hmm.
We are, we are all taught consciously or sometimes unconsciously, even from the pool that you're in solos, right?
So true.
You know, again, you have friends, likes attract likes, right?
Mm hmm.
You learn at a very early age, you're in elementary school, you and I like the same thing, we gonna be friends, right?
Right, right.
Like my day, you like the same cartoon or whatever, if that's what, we gonna be friends, right?
So true.
And then, but that grows to another subset from middle school to high school. There's still those things and then you do the same thing when you get to college, right?
Right.
Oh, you from this area, I'm from this area, we, you know, we have similar. But what we realize here in life is that relationships can be built across the board, right?
So true, yeah.
There's a diversity of experiences and relationships can do more for you than money could ever do.
Man.
And my father was always say, which is obviously what I've adopted now, he's always asked me, what's better than money?
Mm hmm.
Response he wanted to get back was, it's relationships.
Yeah, yeah.
Break that down for some younger people who may not see it in that same vein. Say, listen, if you know the right, you know, if you know the plug, you ain't gotta pay the same.
Oh, true.
And I don't care. And I don't, I mean that from aspects. I mean, I think I'll take it back to the days where, you know, I had a good friend or somebody was working at McDonald's. They may give me an employee discount, so I
Right.
go to McDonald's and the next person
Right, right.
What you make be, you got somebody working in Foot Locker, you may get a little discount.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's one of those things is that relationships can take you far. And we never know what you can do with someone else, what can be for you. So that's without the superpower I give to anybody embarking on a new journey, especially was to see the power in that now, because right now, and we've all been, you know, victims of it to a certain extent.
Yeah, yeah.
Easy to be in solos, when you, easy to be attracted, you know, you black, I'm black, we gonna talk.
Right.
Or you just, and, and sometimes, and again, there's beauty in culture and there's beauty in activity. There's also greater opportunity when you realize that you can have more of those things when you build relationships outside just your own comfort zone.
So, so true. I, I couldn't agree more. I think as I look back in my life, man, relationships have really been my superpower, man. Just from, like you said, careers to just, just everyday life. And that leads me to the next question I talk about in the book, Newb, how to have a mentor and the importance of mentorship, right? A lot of times I meet, you know, college students, especially freshmen, it says, hey, you know, I don't even know where to start, I don't have a mentor, you know, I'm kind of intimidated to ask someone to be my mentor. Talking about relationships and kind of keeping on that theme, what advice would you give a freshman students who might be looking for a mentor in life? And how has a mentor impacted your personal life?
Yeah, immensely. Uh, there've been countless mentors I've had over
Yeah.
that I still have, right? That's the good thing about learning this is timeless. So whatever field or whatever step you're gonna need to take or you want to take, you need to ask someone who's been there before.
Right.
You, well, a lot of people will be probably who realizes that when people are asked, most people are willing to help.
So true.
Now, now, you gotta bring something to the table too. So I first tell you is don't be afraid to ask, uh, because we've all been there. Whoever you asking has been in your shoes before or no one has gotten to where they are in life in a vacuum. I don't care what anyone tells you.
Yeah, yeah.
You needed someone to help you get where you are in life. And people who, that are successful, have some life experiences, whatever that may be, understand that. So as young people, first of all, just don't be afraid to ask. You say, well, I don't know the, I don't know the right question to ask, then you say that. Say, hey, I don't know the right questions I should be asked.
Yeah.
All I know is that I, I, is value in talking to people who've been there, done it before.
Mm hmm.
So I would love for you to be one of those people that give me five, 10 minutes of your time just to talk about that.
Right.
Just from that. So they have to have the perfect question, they have to have the perfect answer, perfect scenario. Then after you build on that, you understand that mentoring, uh, is also a two way street, right?
So true.
You're gonna ask for someone's time.
Mm hmm.
At the end of the day, then what are you doing in return from that? Obviously, that means are you being a good steward of that?
Right.
Investing that, are you passing it forward? Is it saying, hey, the information I'm gonna take from you, what I learned from you, I'm gonna make sure I'm doing it for someone else? That could be all that's needed from that. But do you remember that, uh, having a mentor is not just you just raising your hand or asking someone to do for you? It is a two way street or if nothing else, making sure that you're paying it forward to someone else who needs it.
Man, so, so true. I have to remind myself, even at my old age, man, like, let me check on my mentor. You know, like you said, it goes both ways. And a lot of times, you know, and when you're in that mentee position, sometimes you get comfortable, you're waiting for your mentor to reach out or check on you. And I love how you're saying it really goes both ways, you know? You get, you know, you get a small salary or you start working, hey, it's nothing wrong with taking your mentor out for coffee or kicking on them text message. Yeah, very, very.
I mean, and again, these are people, that doesn't, you know, those are people who poured into you, helped you.
Yeah.
You are, and I get it, you know, we have seasons in life where you're on the next thing. But hopefully that we're all, because I can even think about myself, how people I should make sure I'm still staying connected to.
Mm hmm.
But if nothing else, what I, what my, what my commitment is to those folks who helped me is that I'm gonna do it for someone else.
So true.
Pay it forward.
Your back, man. So, so very important. I guess the next question, when we think about college fit, I know you kind of mentioned earlier in your introduction, you went to the Lamorenoon College, HBCU, the only HBCU right here in Memphis, right? And so I think that's where I met you, Mikel. I think that was my first job out of college, which was great.
Many, many years ago.
Many years ago, many years ago. And so a lot of times when we run into high school students, you know, the main question is like, I'm trying to decide what type of college to go to. And, you know, in 2025, we have so many options from community college. We have HBCUs, we have, you know, four year PWI. So this just goes on and on. How did you select, um, Lamorenoon College? And what advice would you give to a young person who might be on a fence with trying to decide what college to attend, what type of college?
You gotta look at the environment.
Mm hmm.
Sure. And again, as a young person, you're probably thinking about a couple of things, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's giving me the money? Where can I go?
One.
And for me, it started, you know, I always, you know, for me, you know, Sean, I always wanted to go to an HBCU. I, I, I have a fam, my entire family went to an HBCU.
Okay, okay.
My father graduated from Lamorenoon College. My mother graduated from Fort Valley University now, but you know, Fort Valley State.
Yeah, yeah.
Time and, and, uh, my sister, uh, went to Clark, Atlanta University was at the time. So it, all those things are kind of ingrained in me that I always knew that I wanted to go to an HBCU in some form or fashion. And it just so happened that I played a little basketball and, and happened to be all right in my day for a little bit. The basketball scholarship, they helped me go to Lamore. But it really, um, really for me, uh, not only about where can I get the resources, it was also about the culture too.
Yeah, yeah.
And the fit, you know, there's some things that you may realize, you know, what's the best fit for you? You have a lot of large universities and, and I know there's power in that too, because I just talked about relationships and
Right.
power when you go to a school probably that's 20 or 30,000 people.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
You know, there's a huge network when it comes to that, that is very beneficial in that. Then there's power to going to a smaller school that has less students or
So true.
has more one-on-one to where your professors actually know who you are.
Mm hmm.
That's a given occurrence because they know who you are, so they know you're within class.
Right.
Know you're not doing those things.
Yeah, yeah.
That was connectivity I was looking for. I was looking for smaller classroom, more of a family oriented environment. People know your name, you know their name, you can really get involved and affect some change. Now, too, there's, you know, there's opportunities that existed, uh, some of our smaller colleges that you may not have an opportunity to get. Yeah, you could probably go to a 20 or 30,000, you know, student
Yeah, yeah.
And you may be being student governmental, who knows? You know, so many students, but in some smaller colleges, you can go kind of stake your claim and really get plugged in and really be involved. So that's what I was looking for. That's what Lamorenoon College was able to offer me. Along with that, just, it really is not, it's not cliche. It really is a family, uh, environment that comes along with that. Uh, so that's what, you know, really drew me and, and I'm glad I made that decision.
Yeah.
I did, yeah.
Man, that's great. Again, I love how you're saying, you know, you gotta find what's best for you. Um, like, you know, I always recommend college tours or, like you said, you have family members that went to HBCUs or your mentors, right? That you can ask those questions about. And like you said, overall, like, hey, 2025 scholarships, money, all of those things are fact.
Man, that's driving, that's driving.
Yeah.
Listen, I tell, look, I tell my daughters, you know, if I gotta pay for college, and I guess, I didn't, that means I got some say so where you go.
Right, is that?
So I know my, I know my, now, you go out there and, you know, you do, you do your thing and obviously you get scholarships and all that kind of good stuff, then you have some say so in that.
Right.
Oh, it is, it's, it's the best fit. I've had the best of both worlds. I think that's getting my ass from a much larger, uh, institution and, and, and saw them, the packed in environments there as well. So it is about the right fit and you think that you, not only that you feel that you're at home with and, but your family has some community too as well. So think about what's best for you long term.
Yeah, so true.
Paying off the money because the money's important. Uh, while the resources that help you to pay for college, you wanna obviously do the best you can not to be so much in debt.
Right, right.
So, you know, that's all, all things play a factor.
So true, so true. And I guess, again, continue with the theme of education. Of course, we just talked about college fit, right? 2025, a lot of times when we talk to students, especially young high school students, the value of college is always in question, right? And so when we look at the data around college going and we see that, you know, each year, you know, you look at the data, you slight, get slightly depressed, man, especially when we look at students of color. Each year is, is going lower and lower and lower, right? Because you have students that say, hey, I can go work on YouTube or I can just go out to Amazon and get a job. I don't want to waste two or four years in college. What would you say to that student about just what college or education has meant to you and added to your life?
Well, again, go, I'll go by the same thing. What college was able to do for me is still have lifelong relationships that I have to this day.
Right.
It also has the opportunity to be a part of a community that the city was to be, you know, only, uh, your network, but also a, a family associated with that as well. So that's what college can give you as well. The education standpoint of it is just to continuously learning.
Right, I was a student.
Because there's some pride people who watch your podcast and say, yeah, no, you ain't gotta go to college to learn and all that. And you don't, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't, you don't. Um, uh, but there, but there is it, but there's a sense of continuous growth.
Mm hmm.
Things you know that, that's why I'm glad to see that some people go to college later in life or what, you have unconditional students and all that can break as well. Uh, but that's what it's able to do for you. It helps to change, shape your, your train of thought.
So true, yeah.
Helps to build that, uh, network of people that you may not have access to in the past.
Yeah.
And again, you never know where that starts from that. People, you know, the people start businesses together because they went to school together.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they, they start helping political campaigns.
Right.
They went to school together, whatever it can be. So it's that sense of, you know, belonging and culture that shape along with the continuous learning. And that doesn't mean that everybody goes to college is smart or that they, that they have some, you know, some superpower. But it does shape, you know, your thoughts to help you build who you want to be going forward as a person.
So true.
So, so hopefully it's college, but if some people say, hey,
Yeah.
that's not, that's not the step for me now. Whatever, continuous learning mode that you're in, you know, just make sure that's something that you can continually grow from.
So true, and so true. I, I love how you said, you know, back in the day, I think we only thought of colleges as their four year option, right? But again, I think the great part of being now, later in 2025, 2026, you have so many options. So there could be a certification, there could be a technical school. But the key, like you said, if some gets somewhere, you could continue to learn. And again, most of the, the learning comes outside of the classroom. I love how you're talking about networking and just relationships and just all of those soft skills that you learn.
Outside of.
Yeah, that's gonna really come in handy in your, in your lifetime. So, yeah, I couldn't agree more. I guess the next question is we think about careers, right? And I think, I start the book off, we're talking about how to select a college major. The average student changes their major at least three times.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So just curious, are we gonna take you back a little bit? Uh, and I know you do many things, right? But I know your, your main role is at FedEx. How did you decide to get in your, your career? Like, what factors?
Man, I didn't decide.
It's kind of
Yeah, like, like, think, like, a lot of things in life. Like, there's some people and there's very much value in someone that says, hey, I want to go to college, I want to be a doctor, right?
Right.
Or, you know, or, you know, count, they're, they're very disciplined.
Yeah, yeah.
I went to college thinking I wanted to be a chiropractor.
Hmm, okay.
Only because I had a mentor, that's what they did.
Yeah.
And, you know, they drove a nice car at the time I was in high school. They had a, a nice house and we, I was like, you know what? What you do, I'm gonna do what you do.
Right.
Simple as that. But, but what drew me to that, uh, where I realized it was my enjoyment of business.
Hmm.
And it wasn't necessarily the science aspect of it. Because I realized once I got into college that, when they told me how much science had to take, I was like, wait a minute.
Yeah, like I'm changing.
Wait a minute. That's not the interest.
Yeah.
Drew me to, what he did is that he was running a small business.
Mm hmm.
Good, that, that was a small business. And he used to tell me, my mentor would tell me, he said, Mikel, if I had the business aspect of this down, I'd be, that'd be great. I said, okay, great. I even, I said, you know what, I'm gonna get a business degree because at the time, you can get in chiropractic college with any degree at the time.
Yeah.
You just had to take certain science.
Okay, okay.
So I realized it was my, my love of business and entrepreneurship and, and what drew me to that. And then, so as you start getting to those fields, I was, I was fortunate enough to land an internship.
Okay.
That I was one, wanted to turn down at one point through relationships because I already was interning someplace else.
Okay.
Live offering everything else. And thankfully, uh, through, was turned out to be a mentor for me, uh, taught some of his opportunity at FedEx to, to, to be an intern.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, I didn't think that my life or my career would be in transportation or logistics at the time.
Right.
I was drawn to being an entrepreneur and doing some things that, and running some small businesses and, which I've done over my lifespan.
Yeah, yeah.
What really drew me to that. Uh, again, the opportunity to have an internship, that's why I'm so big on internships because you never
Yeah.
It can help you see what you want to be, help you with what you don't.
No.
Yep.
So true.
So, and it's kind of, you know, it's a trial period, right? It's, it's something you can do while you're in college, you get an internship. I go, that was good, that was good experience, but nope, it's happening. And you keep doing those things, uh, till you find the right fit or till it finds you. That's what, you know, that's what I say to that. I didn't seek out, you know, being in transportation or logistics. It just so happens that, you know, my love for business understanding has helped me to do multiple jobs and multiple aspects where it being marketing, IT, sales, international. I've done all those aspects at a company, at a global company. So, uh, I'm thankful for the early opportunities I had as an intern.
Yeah.
Just to see and experience those things and kind of helped me shape my career.
So true, so true. Newb, I think you read the book. Uh, I talk about internships in that chapter, right? Again, just, you took the words out of my mouth, man. I think it's gonna tell you, hey, I'm going the right way. I love what I'm, I said I was gonna do or I hate it. And I think that's the joy of college, right? It allows you, I tell students all the time, it's okay to change your major. Like, we're talking about something, you want to be passionate about, you want to feel that you're in purpose, right? Something you get up every day and just you're ready to do it, right? And so, you know, hey, sometimes we do base majors on mom or dad or mentor because a lot of times that's all we see, the college.
As you got to, I mean,
Yeah, exactly.
And someone, you, if you asked your, you know, younger self, what'd you want to do when you were 16, 17?
Yeah.
Some people may know, and some people may have a, you know, very generic answer when it comes to those things. So when you get to college, all of a sudden, 18, it's like, oh gosh, I got to the 18, am I supposed to determine what the next 40 years of my life is gonna look like?
Right, right.
Again, if you're going for a very disciplined aspect, then you can understand that, right?
So true.
I'm gonna take the discipline, you gotta go for this and additional college after that, whatever that may be. Uh, and there's value in that too as well, but there's value to having diverse opportunity, diverse thought and saying,
Yeah.
I can do this and that. Or I'm going down this path right now and, you know, I got an internship or
Yeah, yeah.
I was able to see a day in life, so that's really good advice. If you're talking about where you want to be intriguing a major,
Mm hmm.
to choose that major, then find a way where you can find something that works in that field or internship. Or just maybe inter, shadowing, because we was
So true, yeah.
We don't have any internships right now. Okay, cool, can I just come by a shadow for?
Yeah.
Can I come around just sit in the, whatever it may be? Can I just come hang out for a week and just see how you all do it? That can say, oh, this really doubles down why I chose the right thing. Or say, you know what, that, I, I was, I, I appreciate this aspect of it. I think I may want to try this as well.
Yeah.
Shout out some things, whatever you may go into, on what the major in your field.
So true, so true. I guess, man, when we think about the many things that you do, man, we talked about FedEx, you know, your family man, father. What made you want to run for county mayor on top of the many other things?
Yeah, quite frankly, you know, Sean, just because I believe, uh, that we have tremendous opportunity, uh, even though I get tired of hearing the word potential, when it's come to Memphis and Shelby County, but really what it is. But it's, if we have those opportunities and we can really harness them in, if we elect the right leaders, quite frankly, I wouldn't be responsible for development in generational projects that you and I have never seen in our lifetime, Sean, and will see them again. And utilize this time to really change the trajectory of Shelby County and Memphis and all our municipalities going forward, we're gonna, we're gonna lose out from it, you know? Funny, you talk to, you just look at my background, I keep my background and kind of keep the home always on my mind there.
Yeah.
On the other side of this bridge here is a whole nother state that we
So true.
We compete with that state, Arkansas, we compete with Mississippi because our, we, we all know good folks we love and and friends, they live over the bridge in West Memphis, or they live over Orlando or Olivera, South Haven. And that's all good, but when they, what they do is they take advantage of the amenities that are in Shelby County. They fly out from this airport, they go down to FedEx Forum to have, uh, to entertain them. They go to the orphan, everything else.
Yeah.
The problem is we seeing our tax base erode all around us by these surrounding communities. And if we don't utilize these opportunities to really get us on the track and compete collectively, then we'll look around and see our population continue to decrease and decline. And that obviously, unfortunately, means the services will be declining in Shelby County. And we won't be the city or the county that we know we should be with a population of almost close to a million. We'll get, we'll see our population continue to decrease. And when we do that, people move and leave and everything else. So we gotta make sure we're leaning in correctly, uh, with the right leadership in place. And I know I'm well posed to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Good stuff, good stuff. And man, again, definitely excited about the announcement. And um, again, we want the viewers to make sure they go out and look at your website, man.
Yeah, Lowryfor901.com, yeah, please.
Yes, yes.
901.com, check us out.
Yes, and I'm gonna just throw this question out here. What role do you think government, right, is for? And we can even expand it to community plays in the field of education here in Memphis.
Oh, it's, it's paramount. I mean, one of the responsibilities and the charter responsibility of the county is education.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, 40% of your tax base uh, at least goes to funding education.
Mm hmm.
Uh, schools and this, everything else goes along with that. So it's paramount, you know, the county being responsible for education, public safety and healthcare, they're all intertwined.
Right, right.
If we're not educated properly, then obviously it could lead to an unhealthy lifestyle and everything else. Or that could lead to you not having adequate opportunities to where some people end up in our, our justice system and everything else. Or not being adequately from a healthcare standpoint, not looking where our mental health status is, that could also lead support education, also lead to.
Yeah.
More health and incarceration. You just never know, so they're intertwined. So it's paramount that we lean in and making sure that the government continues to make investments in our schools and children, starting early on, as early as pre-K. That's what I wanna see. I wanna see that for all of Shelby County. I'll just make those investments early, cause that's how you charge to change culture.
So true, yes.
We can start shaping the culture we wanna be instead of just being reactive to the culture today. And that's what leadership takes.
So true, so true. Again, thank you for calling it out. You know, it takes the, the village, right? Um, like you said, starting early, I think a question, um, I wanna say I was watching 88.5 yesterday, the Memphis Shelby County School um, podcast. And I think the question was like, how early should students start even looking at a college? And I think some of the folks on the panel was like, as early as kindergarten, right? Because if you start seeing it and you believe it early, hey, you, you feel like you can become those things. So it's very important to.
Right, and with today's.
Yeah.
Sound like, I'm sounding like, oh, like with today's technology.
Right.
But it's seriously, it's like, you know.
Yeah.
My youngest daughter's 11. I mean, the things obviously that I had never had access to.
Yeah.
Knows how to talk, you know, get a prompt to chat GPT.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
And, and everything else and.
Yeah.
So technology's changing to where it's in making the wealth of information more accessible.
So true.
Now, and so, you know, yeah, watch them, watch them at kindergarten, gosh, but you know, it's not far fetched to say, hey.
Yeah.
We can start learning about these things very early on. My daughter knows about colleges, but that's because her, her sister went to college.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
So true.
So you're right, early on is when you start to say, hey, what's this environment look like for me?
Yeah, yeah, so true. New, this has been a great conversation. Of course, I could stay on here with you all day, but I know you have a packed schedule. Uh, as we close it out, thinking back to your younger self, and I know you talked about that a little bit earlier when we talked about careers. What advice, a lot of times people see, you know, hey, um, soon to be county mayor, Mikel Lowry or Dr. Boyd. Um, and a lot of times people don't know the story to get there, right? What advice, looking back at your younger self, what one piece of advice would you give the younger you? And let's say, hey, in college, going to college.
Well, would I tell me and everyone else and.
Yeah.
That this too shall pass.
Hmm, mm hmm, mm hmm.
When you think everything's great and everything's going well and.
Yeah.
That too shall pass. When you go through trials and tribulations
Mm hmm.
And things that are just helping you, make you mentally stronger and everything else that you don't see at the time.
Mm hmm.
That too shall pass. So.
Man.
Well, keep focus and keep the whatever goals you have, the main focal point. I understand that there are gonna be obstacles and barriers that come along that try to derail you. But the obstacles don't block your path, the obstacles are your path.
So true, yes.
So I, I, I lean into that, cause those things I didn't learn till later, cause like, Lord, why we keep going through all these steps? Why is this, you know, why, why is this right here? Why am I going through these things?